He was on the corner of 10th.
Looked like he had a Warner.
Yes, 10th and.
What? I know. It's kind of a certain.
Warner.
And then we have this.
Maybe we have this new thing.
I got it written down. I still have that.
I thought it was 10th and 11th.
Yeah.
That's good.
Three seconds.
No matter what, but I gave you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our councilman. Please rise for our flag stick.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Counselor knows the drill. Consent calendar. If there's something you want to discuss further, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Well, Hugh's not here, so we don't know how to do it.
I hope that works.
Is he on vacation or?
Yeah, he's been here like the whole month.
Okay.
He's in Europe. Good for him.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through D.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Kinzer and a second by Councilmember Lindley to Waggoner to approve the consent calendar A through, is that a D?
D.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, passed unanimously. Now we'll go to public comment. This is something that's not on the agenda, which is only one more item. State your name and address for the record. Tony? No? All right, we'll close public.
We got one.
Oh, come on up. Yeah.
My name is Joellen Cassi.
Yeah.
And then what else would you want?
Your address, microphone, Joellen.
694 Brickyard Boulevard.
Okay.
Okay. And the issue that I'm bringing to you guys is that on North Reed, there is the three-hour time limits for parking. And what we're finding is that people from the mobile community are parking along in front of our houses in Brickyard. And I'm really speaking on behalf of my neighbor because he is not feeling very well and he can't make it, Norman Rindell. And he keeps his yard very meticulous. Everyone tries to keep everything really nice. And one of the cars in particular has been parked there for a month. And then the other car, an issue comes, drops it off, leaves it there for days on end and comes back for it. And they're running out of parking where they live, and so they're coming into where we live and leaving these vehicles. And because when we call, they're all licensed and they can stay there, I'd like to propose something either like bringing the three-hour parking into where we are or.
So on one side of the street, it's three hours. On your side, it's not?
Well, during the main road at Brickyard, either side you could park and there's no three hours.
Okay.
But on North Reed, where they are coming from.
There's three hours.
It's three hours.
So they're coming over your neighborhood.
Right.
Do they park permanent? Or is it just the temporary, the people coming in and out?
Well, one car's been there for a month now. I don't know when he's coming back for it. And when a neighbor had gone up and because someone was trying to jiggle the car lock, she was just seeing if they needed help, she spoke profanities to her as if like, I can do whatever I want. This is, you know, I can park here, et cetera. So it's kind of what we're getting as a neighbor, not just like, hey, can I park here for a second? Or, you know, I'm going to be here, whatever. It's quite the opposite.
I don't wonder why North Reed has a three-hour.
I was wondering too.
Probably because of that one side with the mobile homes.
We'll have to go check that.
North Reed is three hours.
Well, why would, I wonder why we did that and then we just pushed the problem somewhere else?
We like to do that.
Squeaky wheel.
Yeah, we'll go check it out, Joellen, and then we'll get back to you.
Now you're the squeaky wheel.
Sure am. Yes. Thank you. Good on you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment time and we will go to new business. And this is our first reading, so there's no action. It's a solid waste rate changes relating to commercial recycling and curbside food and yard waste, and this would probably be Aaron.
Well, we continue to march down the path of implementation of our new recycling as well as commercial recycling and food and yard waste, residential curbside pickup services. If you haven't had a chance to drive down Alexandria yet, it's worth a look. If you look into the Lindley property, as we call it, the future expansion for the sewer plant, you're going to see a field with somewhere between five and 6,000 toters kind of stacked, piled, sorted, waiting to be cleaned up, restickered, and put back into service. And then the trucks on order. We have hired a new employee to do that work, Brent. And I always get his last name wrong.
Sheflebine.
Sheflebine, Brent Sheflebine will be joining our solid waste department as a full-time employee on August 1st. He already has his CDL, so he'll hit the road running and will be probably driving this route. So a lot of moving parts. If you got your utility bill this month, you should have received the first of our public notifications about the service. We know they were reached because it sounded like a call center in finance for most of the week. Literally, three phone calls going simultaneously with somebody at the front counter, all asking about recycling and yard waste. So it's been very crazy in finance as a result of this transition. We plan a similar notice next month that will also have a four-month calendar to get people through the end of the year. And then the first month of implementation, we'll send out a third notice that'll include what goes in recycling cans. So kind of a one, two, three. These notices also, by the way, are going to all of our utility customers as well as residents who don't pay their own bills, which is actually a surprisingly large number of people. So we're hitting everyone who pays bills as well as everyone who uses the service and doesn't pay their own bill.
That was going to be my question, how we fix that, because I did hear from people in the neighborhood that it was fixed.
Yeah, yeah, we just pay more. Yeah, it's about 1,500 people, and so it requires, 1,500 households, so it requires an additional run of the printed material, which is not that big of a deal. The bigger cost is, of course, the postage because we can't piggyback on our already purchased postage for billing. But we'll do that for at least the next two, and then we'll have to have a conversation about our quality life campaign and whether we want to spend that additional money to outreach on those as well. I think it's probably pretty important, so that's out there.
I think I asked you about this the other day, about Leo not wanting certain glass items in the recycle to throw them in the garbage.
Yeah, no, we.
Is that going to be explained in that scenario too?
We're going to take glass, just as we do today. Yeah, no, the trend in the recycling community is to pull glass out of the recycling stream and put it into the garbage, or preferably to pull it out of the co-mingled recycling stream and put it into a single-stream recycling model where people bring it to collection points. The issue with the glass is that it breaks and it contaminates the other materials and makes them less valuable and harder to reuse. The company that's going to take our co-mingled recyclables was not willing to pay us more if we took glass out. So there was really no advantage for us and essentially inconveniencing the community.
Getting out of totes or something to put it.
But that is what the Department of Ecology is pushing as we move forward. So I would look for that in the future. There will be a significant push to get glass out of co-mingled, and that may be something the city council revisits, you know, in three, four, or five years. So what you have before you tonight is our first reading on the rates. And you can see the, there are a number of changes that we made. And in fact, I plan to bring to you in November, when we do our annual Consumer Price Index adjustment of rates, some more significant changes to the structure of this particular chapter, 8.04. It's been pieced together over the past 50 years and it doesn't flow very well. So in looking at it to make these changes, we're living with the old structure. Now didn't seem to be the time to do a full rewrite. But at some point, I would like to actually rewrite how chapter 804 flows to make it more user-friendly. It's just not easy to follow for me or I think for anybody else who's using it. So just working through section one, this is existing definition for yard trimmings. We're deleting rocks and cement from the definition of yard trimmings, adding organic material. We currently prohibit those in our garbage system. We want to make it clear that we're prohibiting them in the garbage cans but allowing them in the food and yard waste service. We will have further on a place where rocks and cement can be taken in a recyclable section for a fee. Section two adds the residential curbside food and yard waste charge. That would be a 96-gallon can for $8.94, which is the current rate. So you'll recall that if we had stayed the course with waste management, this rate was going to go up, I think, to around $11 if I recall correctly.
Like $10.94.
So our internalizing this will keep the rate the same. Of course, our customers will.
For a year.
Not know that, so they won't realize they dodged a $2 rate hike, but you know that. Section three, all I've done here is clarify that yard waste disposal, this relates to the drop-off site and deletes our old address. The same issue for section four. Section five is where we've addressed the recycling fees. This is our current language, so you can see we've deleted all of the computer and electronics. We take those free of charge and have actually for some number of years under the e-cycle program, so just deleted all that. I've added bricks, broken concrete, and approved masonry at a rate of $10 per ton. So that's kind of a convenience factor for local people. We've deleted the junk vehicle. Those are basically handled through code enforcement, not through solid waste. And then following the junk vehicles, you can see the commercial recycling, and I intend to bring this to you as part of your second reading in a more, more easy-to-read table. So you'll see the same numbers, but a format that just looks a little more friendly. So there's three services that we're looking at here, which is the mixed paper, cardboard, and mixed recycling. So prices just depending upon the size of the container that people are ordering, and this is all commercial. We're pretty eager to get the rates fixed so we can begin marketing our commercial recycling program. Residential recycling, as well as the food and yard waste.
You take batteries in.
Will continue to be captive markets, so no one else will be able to compete with the city within the city limits for those services. Commercial recycling is different. It's an open market, so we're, we are pricing ourselves to be under all three of our competitors with this rate structure. Then item B just clarifies electronics are coming in free, and then we've added some additional service fees that deal with padlocks, extra pickups if you need more than one per week, the container cleanout and redelivery of a container if we pick it up because you didn't pay.
Batteries, car batteries. I can't find that in here.
We do take those, and I don't think we charge for those. I think we get paid for those. So I have to ask Leo about that.
Yeah. Tires are $2 each.
Yeah. Section six clarified on the fuel surcharge. Patsy had a concern that an overzealous future finance director could read this and think that there should be multiple surcharges for each service since we're now operating three services. So I clarified that to say fuel surcharge for garbage services. Our intention is that the surcharge you pay for the garbage is the same surcharge that would apply across the board. So you would not have three surcharges, you would just have the one that you currently have. And that's part of, when I talked about rewriting the code, I'd like to rewrite it so your bill makes more sense, so it doesn't show up that way. It's more of a, it's more of an account surcharge than it is a service-based surcharge. So it's clear that you're not paying, I mean, there are three trucks that visit you, but you're only paying one surcharge. That covers the whole system. So that should be customer-friendly in that. And that's it for the substantive items. Unless there are any questions? That'll be on your agenda next meeting for action as well as for a public hearing. Also, I'm trying to get for you two different contracts, one with Skagit soils for the food and yard waste recycling, and then one with waste management for the co-mingled recyclables. Just having a little bit of challenge getting those documents negotiated and on your table for action. So last thing on this is just a reminder that, you know, the go-live date is really just over a month away. We're about the third week of August. You're going to see a caravan of vehicles driving on garbage day and on, or excuse me, on recycling and yard waste day. We'll have waste management leading it. They'll empty the can. They're going to hire a contractor who will show up with a team of, I think they run two box trucks and four to eight people. They'll grab their cans, throw them in the box trucks, and get them out of there. Then we'll have our crew come in right in line with that train and drop off your new can. So essentially, you wheel it out in the morning, and when you come home that day, your can that you've known and loved will be gone, and a new can that was known and loved by an Anacortesian will be sitting there. And if you have a yard waste service, you'll have a brand-new 95, 96-gallon yard waste can.
So to get them ready for the different colors.
Yes.
Tell them that. This is going to screw you up.
Yes, well, so if you've got your insert that was in your utility bill, you can see the color scheme that's out there, and it is a change. So garbage will continue to be blue.
It'll take me three years.
Hopefully, most people will have a black lid. It's going to take a few years to transition that. So if you have a blue-on-black now, that's your garbage. We still have blue-on-blues out there, and we do have some pink cans as well. That's garbage, so that's not changing. Recycling, which is currently blue-on-blue, is going to become green-on-green. And it's going to have Rabenko's logo on the side. But on the top will be a sticker about this size that says co-mingled recyclables and has color pictures of what goes in it.
So recycling becomes green.
That'll be right on the lid.
And yard waste becomes?
Yard waste is going to be a blue can with a green lid.
I thought it was going to be gray. Well, which ones are going to be grayed in?
No gray.
What about the ones we bought from Anacortes?
Oh, those are some of the ones we won't likely use.
The whole field?
No, no, those are green. There are some gray ones out there, but we bought about 6,800 or 900 cans. And in that, I think we're estimating around 1,000 of them are either broken, odd size, or odd colors. So the broken ones will get thrown away. The odd size, odd colors will probably be saved for special use. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's lots of moving parts there. Leo's hopping around like crazy trying to get everything together, Serena, everybody in finance. You know, it's a big, it's a big transition, really, but we're excited about it.
Aaron, has waste management continued to play nice during this?
Yeah, you know, I've been happy with what they've been doing. Our most recent request was for a customer list of everybody who has the yard waste service. They promptly provided that to me, and that's been helpful for finance because as people call in, they can consult the list, confirm that they're on it, tell them we're going to automatically roll them over, no further actions necessary. What I haven't gotten that I would have liked to have had three weeks ago is the contract. I intended for that to be here tonight. We've negotiated the terms of the deal, but I have not seen it reduced to writing.
Because I had an interesting interaction at night. I think Rick's, Rick was the first guy who was in contact with the customer who happens to be a waste management employee, and he was absolutely adamant that the city had come and taken away his recycling bin when clearly that couldn't be the case. And then he named some company, which is actually Waste Management's third-party can manager. So I never did solve why they took it. We took one to him.
Yeah.
But he's sure the city is up to something, and I wondered if.
Did he live out on Carter Road by any chance?
No, he was what?
1,000 block of Warner or Nelson or something.
See you over there. Oh, well, so one of the things that we have seen is waste, they pay a contractor to pick up cans, and the contractor, I'd like to say occasionally, but more than occasionally, grabs all the can. They get paid by can, by the number of cans they pick up. And so they tend to be a little bit zealous in their collection of cans, and it's been an issue, really, it's been problematic. So we will have, you know, basically a pre, a pre-route meeting with waste and their contractor that will be doing the pickup work. And we're intending to follow right along the route, in part to ensure that our cans are still there, you know, because we have had that problem where somebody shows up and the waste can's gone and so is our can. And now we've got to go get our can from them and get what they need back in there.
Well, now I want to be paid for taking a missed can back.
Yeah, well, you know, as we fade out of that contract, you know, we have a number of provisions that would allow us to fine Waste Management for some of their current practices, but at least in my opinion, as we fade out of that contract and begin a new business relationship, I kind of like to turn the page on that and just focus on the positive.
Aaron, I recently spent an exciting half hour listening to the Diane Ream Show about recycling and its future and kind of current status. And most of the major metropolitan areas are talking about what's going into the recycling, the co-mingled recycling. And a lot of cities have penalties for people who abuse, put garbage, put things that shouldn't belong in there, and I don't see anything like that in our coding. And I want to know, do we have something like that? Or is it something that we should add? Because people are going to put stuff they shouldn't in there. It's going to cost us, cost, you know.
Are you talking about?
It costs the whole system.
A garbage police? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, people are going to put in the recycling things they shouldn't, and it spoils the whole stream and makes it more expensive overall. I mean, if we, you know, if we're going to be good guardians of.
How would they?
I mean, I'm not saying that. I'm saying when they're dumping it up, they're going to say, okay, 432 Talcott Street, you put in a microwave in that recycling bin, we see it, we're going to, you know, warn you, and now you're going to get fined the next time.
I just want to say, when I was done being mayor, can you guys hire me to be the garbage police?
They pick it up, they see.
Here's how it works, so when they pick up the can.
They're the garbage police in Seattle.
When they pick up the can, it goes up to the top of the hopper, and they've got video cameras.
Yeah.
That watch it. So the driver sees that, and we will have penalties in our contract with Waste Management for sending them more than a certain percentage of contamination. So if they bring the can up and they see a bag of trash, what we will do as our first issue is we'll, we'll red-tag their can, say, hey, don't put garbage in it. But certainly, if a neighbor is a persistent contaminator of the recycling stream, then they would get penalties for garbage removal costs. And it may be that we need to address that more specifically, and here I'll take a look at that. So there's no question, though, that, at least from Leo's view, Waste has not been very careful in policing that, and that we can do better, we should do better, that our co-mingled stream should be cleaner.
But we should be able to do it with our own guys.
I'm not saying they create something special. I'm just saying.
No, this is, this is what the driver does, you know, when the can, they look at the monitor and go, wow, that was a microwave.
I just don't want to get like.
Or that was all, you know, grass they're sitting in. You know, those are the sorts of things that actually do cost significant dollars. No different from green waste, incidentally. You know, somebody puts a bag of, a bunch of plastic in the green waste bin, and we show up out there to dump it. We pay for that because they can't just compost it. They've got to go out and throw it out.
I know what you mean. You want it to have teeth.
Yeah, but they're also, in Seattle, in your trash, if you have something in there that you should have recycled, they have a guy going around looking, oh, those cans should have been over. And you get $124 fine. I know people who live in Seattle that's got fined.
Yeah, but that's a different issue than the one Brett's raising, which is where you're, you're basically contaminating a recyclable load.
Like putting garbage in recycle.
Right, rather than the reverse, which is, hey, you put recycling in the garbage and you shouldn't have done so.
Yeah. I don't want to go there.
Anyway, does that answer the question on that? I'll take a look at whether we need something else to address that. I kind of think our existing code allows quite a bit of flexibility in charging fees for extra services, and that's what that would be.
Okay.
Well, I had a, I had a question real quick about more recycling, maybe around the city. I know I brought this up one time before, but like even just outside the city hall here.
A recycle station?
There's garbage can, and I, you know, I walk by and I see nothing but a layer of plastic bottles on the top. I'm thinking if there was a, you know, while we're in transition doing this and people are getting used to the new cans, it'd be a good time to put recycling cans in strategic places, and maybe that's one.
Yeah, I'll talk to Leo. I would have to think about the design of those because our plans with public cans has been really pretty lousy, and if it's not carefully tailored.
Yeah.
You will get bags of garbage from people in Skagit County in there rather than recyclables.
Yeah, that's what he was saying.
Well, Leo had an idea for festivals, I think it was two or three years ago, that he would, he was going to create a program that, you know, on certain events or in certain areas, you would create a recycling, like you would see in most cities.
Yeah. Bottles and bottles? Yeah, the last one in the past, they had the blue, they had like the blue plastic on the top, and it was just a clear bag, those cans, and it seemed like they worked really well.
Yeah, because I look at the skate park all the time, and every time I'm over there, it's, the garbage can's filled with cans and bottles. I mean, that all could be recycled. Why are we throwing that away?
Yeah, well, the other challenge is, is getting it, you know? I mean, if you take the driver out of the truck to go fish the can out to line it up with the auto stick, you're buying time, and what you're saving is $49 a ton disposal cost. And obviously, there's environmental benefits too, but in terms of cost to the system, what goes in recycling versus garbage is $49 less a ton. But we really struggle with those public cans. They're just challenging.
Correct me if I'm wrong, right now, I had a restaurant, and I wanted to recycle.
Yeah.
But our city didn't pick up from commercial people, recycles. You know, like, like all your Mexican restaurants have beer bottles, beer bottles, they go in the trash. Unless the guy individually, I did it, I used to haul mine down to the thing.
Well, right.
Now that, since we're going to be doing recycling, are we going to be able to do some more, maybe more commercial recycling?
Yeah, well, that's basically this ordinance. So there are currently three commercial recycling service providers in the city. We're going to become the fourth, and our rates are lower than all three of our competitors.
And so they'll have a dumpster that'll take everything.
Yeah, if you look, well, they can choose, you know, it depends what they want to pay for. But if you look in the city parking lot behind Joyce, there's a whole, like, farm of dumpsters out there. One of those is a Waste Management cardboard dumpster.
Yeah, I have one of those.
You know, and, and so you can have mixed paper, cardboard, or mixed recycling, and depending on what you're willing to sort, your price goes up or down. So.
Yeah, we didn't have that, you know, 15 years ago.
Yeah.
But your house did. Okay.
But that's a different truck, different route, too. I mean, it's a, it's a whole different, it's a different truck to do that. Operates differently.
Okay. Anything else? We can go to committee reports, and we can start with Chief Tucker.
So we had a eventful fourth. I don't know if anybody wanted to care to note whether or not the fireworks issues were better or worse. I know on the fourth, they seemed to be about the same, but it seemed leading up to the fourth, we had a whole lot less. I think people were cognizant of the fact they were setting the countryside on fire. We did have a significant fire that Dean got dispatched to up on top of the hill, and we're charging somebody for that one. That was a, I think a 14 or 15-year-old that was setting off fireworks and set the field afire at top of, right in, right off a cascade under the power line, so. We had over 40 calls on the fourth of just different things. It was just a pretty eventful fourth for all of us. We were fortunate, we had all three of our kids that are in the academy right now. We called them in, and they were off for the weekend, so they came and helped out for the parade, and that worked out really well. They got the full Sidro Woolley indoctrination on the Fourth of July. And we made some changes on the Lager Rodeo Parade. You may have seen the ATVs driving up and down that route. We had a lot of concerns about kids creeping out into the route and that big Janicki float that comes through there that's so big, that big steamboat thing. The ATVs kind of roving along the edge kept the kids back, and we got a lot of positive feedback on that. feedback on that. Any other problems with the parade were Nathan's fault, though, so we'd have to hook him up. But we have our, the first two of our kids graduating from the academy next week, I'll be down at the academy next Wednesday, getting the first two of them out. The following week, we've got the first two theft, I mean, the first two people who jump ship from Burlington are starting with us, on the 20th and 21st. So in the next two weeks, we're going to have four brand-new faces out on the street. Unfortunately, we're going to lose one, most likely. We still haven't heard the final word, but one of my sergeants is deploying with his Coast Guard unit, probably lose him for a year, which we knew was coming, but we just haven't heard the exact date. So we'll be up four and down one, and then we got one more in the academy, we just wait for Katie to get out. We've got, let's see, oh, one thing I would like to say, I don't know if you all noted, following the parade, the street crew was out, and I went through the parade right about an hour after the parade was over, and you couldn't hardly tell there had been a parade there. They did a bang-up job, if you get a chance, I would say thank you, if you hadn't noticed that. I know Jermaine was down on Ferry Street, and it was really nice right after the parade. They came through and did a great job cleaning up, I was pretty impressed. We did write several citations for illegal fireworks on the fourth, and hammered a few people, so Brock will be seeing them in court here in the next week or two.
How many did you do? How many tickets were written that night?
We got nine. And that's, I mean, it's almost like shooting fish in a barrel. You can just drive out and, you know, tell people, everything you're doing is illegal, you need to stop. I mean, well, I bought them on the rez, they're all illegal, sorry, anything that goes up and blows up, like the signs say, it's pretty clear. Pretty huge fireworks displays in neighborhoods full of dry grass. It's incredible how stupid people were this year. But we did get quite a few enforcement actions that night, and hopefully word gets out and we'll get more, less problems. But other than that, that's all I got.
I got one question for you. When your officer goes, deploys for a year, you just spread his workload out over everybody for a year?
Right, yep.
Well, you can replace him or...
No, especially not one of my sergeants, this is one of my sergeants, but we've known for six months that he's most likely going to deploy. Coast Guard hasn't given a firm date, but they pretty much said, yeah, you're going. And he's probably dodged a bullet on this for the last couple of years. But this happens every, well, it happened once before to us, but everybody's been experiencing this, using, losing people for about a year. And we actually try to, it does give an opportunity for some of our junior people to step up and fill in roles, kind of unofficially, in more leadership positions. We've got some of our people that are on the cusp, our next rank of people that could be a sergeant, will be doing some of those duties. They'll be almost like the lead officer, but I don't think Aaron will pay him for it.
I had a question for you, too. I went to the carnival on the fourth, and I will say, you know, there was, I just saw one police officer present, but it was really crowded there, it was a huge crowd that night, it was right after the fireworks. And I just saw the one officer, and I actually saw a girl shoplifting, and then I didn't see the officer anywhere. But luckily, they have their own security, but I was just curious, was there just one officer?
Oh, you know, you can't really tell, like I said, we had over 40 calls on the fourth, and, you know, you just run out of, you run out of bodies. Whenever we have almost everybody working the parade timeframe, and from about 7:00 in the morning until 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, we have most everybody but night shift working. And then we keep people on for most of the day, a lot of them, and then send them home. The situation down at the carnival is, that's one thing I didn't mention, but parking down there is horrible. Parking was full down there by about 8:30, and so once we're there, we're there, we're actually, once we get there, we don't leave. But you've got all of that parking from, parking was from township, Down River Road, all the way to Third Street, they were parked all along the road, and that hasn't happened before. Paul Eaton went down there and got one of the last parking spots up on the, up on the upper area, and that was at 8:30. So fireworks didn't go off until, what, 10? And there's no parking, yeah, 10, 10:30?
I got pretty lucky, I guess.
Yeah, there was, there was zero parking, the place was packed, we were running all over town. And we did have, we usually have four people down at the carnival during the fireworks timeframe, and then usually three or four afterwards, getting people out of there and all that. It's just, it's just not really manageable without having all of us down at the carnival.
A lot of people were off the embankment, along the sidewalk, under the trees by the baseball park, too. No parking, but they were driving down the sidewalk, jumping the curve.
Yeah, I mean, that's been our tough spot, and that whole field out there where they have the fireworks, part of it's a hayfield or a potato field, depending on the year. And we lose half of it, so.
It's a week this year?
Yeah, week.
Yeah, so. But, yeah, we did have people down there, just, we don't have enough bodies to do that. We have enough bodies to handle emergencies down there when that's going on. Normal carnival is never really a problem.
Yeah, yeah. It seemed more crowded this year. It's been a while since I've been, but it seemed really crowded.
Yeah, well, it depends on the year. You get another year where it's Thursday or Friday night, or if it's a little cool, nobody's out there. Being a year like this, which is Saturday night, and, but we've really gotten no calls at the carnival, none. We had a few fireworks in the trees, and nobody blew up any porta-potties down there this year, but otherwise, man, there really was no calls there. Next year will be a little bit different, I'll have four more people.
Thank you.
Chief, clear?
Just going to echo what Lynn was saying, over that 24-hour period for the fourth, we responded to 20 incidents, eight of them were fires, 10 medical, and then two service-type calls. Most of the fires, there weren't any structures involved, it was just all grass, and 100% of them were fireworks-related, just to pass that along. But during the parade time, we did staff up real well, we had our 20 members out, staffing around the parade route, and then it goes back down to the five after that, for that period. So those five guys worked their tails off the night of the fourth, so.
Good job. Martin?
Well, we had a pretty active open house a little earlier tonight, some of you were here for that. We've got a lot to think about on the project. We're expecting 100% design plan sometime first part of August. A lot of the concerns that were mentioned, and I'll talk to Lynn about some of them later, I don't know that he was here to hear them, but were kind of enforcement-related and kind of outside of our control, too, because there was a lot of roads-road stuff. And most of the comments were from roads-road residents, which, we're going to address those in some manner and schedule another meeting sometime in the next couple of months. We don't have construction phase funding for that project yet. We're set to apply for TIB funding in August. There's actually a fair chance we could get the funding for next year, so we'll have to consider all of these things. But I guess if I synthesized a lot of the comments, it's people thinking that, you know, we need to rebuild roads-road before we do anything to the intersection. Just so you'll know, that's not the way it works in the funding world. If we don't build that intersection, we'll never get roads-road rebuilt, it's just the reality of it. There would be no demand for it. So that's, that's one of the things that, I don't know, I tried to express it, but I wasn't very clear about it, I guess. And another thing that I heard repeated commonly was that, we've already got this problem. And I'm thinking, yes, you already have this problem. And so building road improvements helps with those kind of things, it doesn't necessarily make it worse. But we'll come up with some manner of expressing those things and trying to get the word out a little better, and bring that back to you later as we continue the project development. We did start on the Virginia Green Street Dean Sanitary Sewer. They're mostly doing locates this week, they'll be digging in earnest next week, and we'll be working with the local community to make sure that they're not over, unduly impacted, although we're digging deep sewers out, so there's always lots of piles of dirts and lots of traffic associated with that. Baybruth Baseball Field Project, I think I reported last time we were done with the grading, Nathan's crew did a great job of building that. I think school districts looking upon that field with envious eyes. I think it's probably going to be a tussle between them and Baybruth on who gets first use of that field. We'll be going back in next week and finishing up the grading of the outside areas. The field itself is done, but we need to dress the slopes and build an area for the grandstand to be installed and for the dugouts and those kind of things. We're helping Baybruth solicit quotes for the fencing, they've got a bit of a budget issue, there's $60,000 available, and their quote for just the backstop and the dugouts was $30,000, so there's a little bit of an issue to address there. And I know Jim Allen's still looking for other funding sources, and hasn't had any success yet with that, is my understanding. So we're also working on pump station upgrade over Johnliner Road, we'll have that out to bid here in the next, next week. And our crew will be back over finishing up the cleanup of 205 North Reed, which a lot of people have asked about. We've got a bid closing on Thursday, tomorrow, to get rid of the material, the stumps, grind them up, and then we'll go in as soon as our crews get free from the ball field and do the grading and that kind of thing. On your deus tonight is a late item that I need you to consider. I apologize for this coming in late, but I literally didn't hear about this until after 2:00 today. But it is just an opportunity for us. As you know, you've approved us submitting an application for the next phase of the Cascade Trail Expansion Project. This one is between Hodgins and Trail Road, and we did that. We were ranked number one under the TAP review process by the, by the Technical Advisory Committee for SCOG. The projects went to the SRITPO, I'm probably getting the acronym wrong, Board for Selection and Award two weeks ago, but there was not a quorum. None of the folks from Island County showed up, which was kind of indicative of the reason we wanted dissolved that, and it is officially dissolved now. So now, that selection process will go back to the full, or the MPO board only at their next meeting there, and we assume that they'll act with a lack of tea and get the project awarded. So those funds were for the cycle of 2020 and 21, so they weren't really immediate-use funds. In the meantime, several of the members of SCOG who had committed to obligate federal funds by July 31 of this year are not going to make it, about a half a million dollars worth of projects, none of them from Sidra Wully, by the way. So the challenge with that is, is the federal funds are kind of a use 'em or lose 'em, and so we get about a million four a year in STP funds. And if we don't obligate, there's a very real chance, we've been told it will happen, that they'll take our obligation and give it to somebody else that has projects ready to go. We don't want to get into that, that situation, and so we've been scrambling to come up with alternative way. My suggestion at the TAC meeting was, is we just awarded these TAP projects for 2020 and 21, can we accelerate some of those into the current obligation? And so that was what we sent forward to the SCOG board, and that's, that's what we decided to try to do. What I brought to you tonight is an amendment to our existing 2015 to 20 tip that would bring the, the design phase for this Cascade Trail Phase 1B project into the current tip in the manner that it needs to be to get, to be able to obligate as soon as possible. And there's a bit of a process involved, we have to actually submit a tip amendment, which is what you would, are asked to look at and approve tonight. Then it goes to the SCOG folks, and they have to do their massage work and get it into the state's system. And so they really, literally need to have this tomorrow, if you're willing to act on that. So what I'm requesting that you do is act to approve tip amendment number two, which basically revises the project description for the Phase B project from the south side of the highway to the north. It's the same thing you did for Phase 1A earlier, when I was getting ready to obligate that. You've already gone through a public process for this, because it was with this very description, what you just approved on June 24 for the 2016 tip. We couldn't use that because it had to be in the present tip in order to obligate it this year. So that's for your consideration tonight, and if you're willing to move on that, it's simply to approve amendment number two to the 2015 to 20 six-year tip.
I've got only one question.
Yes, sir.
And I think I probably already know the answer, but from Hodgins to Trail Road, that'll include the enlarging the drainage system?
It does. So this is actually a real win-win for us. As you knew, we had that unfunded project to replace those storm drains, basically from SR9 all the way out to just before Mike's place there at the, at the Renzo's. This picks up the last piece of undersized 30-inch pipe in that section, so that 700,000 unfunded mandate, we've now done 2/3 of that with this project. And the construction phase includes replacement of that line as well. So we've done pretty well with that. We still are short a little bit of money for the first phase, which I've mentioned a couple times, and we'll be figuring out how to bring that to you as the project develops on that. Another good thing about this is that we can design this at the same time as we design the other part. And once we have that done, it's possible that they could accelerate the construction phase funds. If some of our sister agencies are not able to get their projects moved along the way they should, then we should be able, we may be able to do both of these as one construction project in 2016. I'm not holding my breath about that, but it's very possible, and it could happen, so.
So the motion that you wrote here to approve amendment two to 2015-20 is the motion that the council member should make?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment number two to the 2015-20 26-year Transportation Improvement Program.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Sandstrom, and a second by Councilmember Corningay, to approve amendment two to the 2015-20 26-year Transportation Improvement Program. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, passed unanimously, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Other than just, it was, I think, an excellent Lager Rodeo, the parade was wonderful, the first time I've actually seen the ending of it, and the city crew just did a heck of a job all around town. Really thought the ATVs were a sharp idea. I know they came by my little group more than once, and it was effective at getting them to jump back to their parking space rather than being out there, you know, begging for candy, so.
I'll say a couple or two, the rest of it's...
The blood on the tire from the foot was definitely, you know, noticeable, so, anyway, it was all good. I don't have anything.
How about the Northern State Special Meeting?
Oh, yeah, you've got that reminder, so that's coming up, I guess, next week.
Week from Friday.
Friday, 10:00 to noon, right here, that's another one of our joint meetings with the three partner agencies. Hopefully, you'll get to hear at least a high-level view of the port's proposal to the state for how it would potentially take over the site. We did a tour on Monday with Congresswoman Delbinay, who will soon be representing the city of Sidra Wully, at least in part, once our annexation's complete. She toured Northern State, and then we toured the Omni processor, and that version two machine, if you get a chance to see it, and you haven't, is well worth the tour. It's getting close to being operational, but this, this new machine is designed to accommodate municipal sewer biosolids, such as what we produce, that's on one end. On the other end, it's, it takes septage, as would be hauled from, you know, everything from porta-potties to septic tanks, and then it's got a hopper and a shredder to actually take garbage. So it's a machine, and this is a machine that Peter said he didn't think anybody would really buy necessarily, it was more of a, let me put it all on one machine, so you can see how it all works. And then if you want to, we have a built-in bottling plant that labels the water bottles and the whole deal. So if you want this component, this component, that component, you can see how it works. If you want to just get these two components, get that, and all the way around, so, pretty fascinating.
It's a demo unit.
Yeah, it's a demo unit, although this one's going to go to West Africa in December, and then there'll be a new unit built, and it should be operational in January here in Sidra Wully, that will then go to India early part of next year, is the current plan. Got the best look at the steam engine that we've gotten so far, that was pretty cool. He was talking about, you know, kind of thinking out loud about whether something like that could be manufactured, actually, in the city as well. So that was, for me at least, that was the best part of the tour. I mean, that was really interesting. He got us into the machine, we got on top of the machine, just looked at it in a little bit more detail. the machine. We got on top of the machine, just looked at it in a little bit more detail. And the congresswoman was very intrigued, had a lot of questions. He had questions for her. I think he's definitely starting to zero in on some of the asks that are appropriate for various governmental officials and their roles and what they can do. So that's continuing on, and that'll be Friday, ten to noon. Anything else I forgot?
Ten minutes later, I forgot to ask that. Okay.
Nine minutes later, you wished you hadn't.
I thought I could just say, next, next Friday. Okay. Kevin? I just wanted to say, I see they added a few picnic tables at Bingham Park, and I see them being used. So that was a good deal. So, and, and I wanted to say, I thought the fire department, the police department did an excellent job this weekend.
Thank you. I was going to say the same thing here. And this is the first time in a long time that I actually got to enjoy, I go to Lager Rodeo every year, but this is the first time I stuck around and actually saw the fireworks here and the carnival in a long time. And it was really nice. I was really impressed. It was better than Big Lakes.
Oh, yeah, and you don't have the traffic.
Right, exactly. It was really nice. So keep up the good work.
Unless the barge blows up.
Yeah.
That happens.
Ouch. Ouch.
Heard that?
Yeah. But thank you.
Brendan?
Yeah, same here. Thanks to the police and fire for all the hard work you did over the weekend, keeping everybody safe.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, Leo's crew did too.
Really impressive how quick they got on the cleanup. It really, I'm sure, impressed people who are here, too.
Yeah, all I did was go move my car. I just went to get my car and came back, and everything was cleaned up, like there was never a parade.
Most people don't realize it, but on, and on the Fourth of July, there are close to fifty city employees working.
Mm-hmm.
You know? For all the, so first thing they look forward to at retirement is they can go to a Fourth of July party. You know, we actually had one of our sergeants, and it's just the rules, is you've got to work the Fourth. One of the sergeants had his whole family packed up, engine running. Soon as the parade's over, boom, they started their two-week road trip. You know, but they, they wait till it's over to do that.
Well, as Doug Wood used to say, we do parades, right? He really knows how to do parades.
Yeah, Doug did a good job.
Yeah.
Looked good up on that horse.
Mm-hmm.
Keith?
I don't know if it's the best parade ever, but it's the best one I ever saw. And I heard nothing but positive comments from people out of town. There's the airplane overflying when the-
It jumped over.
Memorial went by. It was good timing, touched everybody. It was fantastic.
How does it feel?
Lynn, you guys kind of got thrown under the bus here at the public hearing that happened beforehand. But I was down at the carnival three days in a row. I saw lots of police presence, and I didn't see any problems. Also, thanks to the citizens' generosity, we earned two thousand dollars plus for donations to park there for the class of 2016 grad night. So I don't think people were unhappy. They were smiling and generous. And sure, there was a little bit of traffic leaving fireworks, but what do you expect?
Mm-hmm.
All I got.
Rick?
Ditto to everybody else about what they were saying about the city services. Beta did well. We have yet to get a tally, but they made, one of the two food vendors that were there, they did well. I think Steelclaw.
Oh, we cleaned up.
Cleaned up.
Still counting money.
Yeah, they're, they're still going. Couple other things. Should I mention what I talked to you about when I saw you guys? We all know that Don Wick is retiring the end of this month, and kind of feel it might be appropriate to invite him over to our meeting at the end of the month, if he has an opportunity, and acknowledge him for his commitment to Seidra Wully and what he does in promoting businesses and things here. And Aaron thought maybe do a resolution proclaiming this day, Don Wick Day, or something. I don't know. But, but at least get him here and acknowledge for everything he's done for us for the past twenty-some years and-
I tried to get a limerick put together, but Keith says I missed the boat on it.
Yeah.
You'll do better. Just keep working.
We'll work on it. Yeah. So anyway, I feel that might be an appropriate thing to do, to acknowledge.
He's having a retirement party, probably, right? They probably would, you'd think.
I imagine.
Yeah, just make sure we can go to that.
Yeah.
That'll be fun.
So anyway, I thought that might be something to acknowledge him and thank him for what he's done for us.
Okay.
Several weeks ago, about three weeks now, I was talking to a friend of mine who has somewhat impaired vision, but with glasses. But these ADA curb appeals that have the ninety-degree rather than the, the sweep, misjudged it, did a face plant, broke his glasses, black eye, the whole thing. So I was talking to Mr. Davidson about painting the top curb of that little, were that five-inch strip, does they come to paint those to let people see those, because they blend too much? Because he just kind of misjudged where that-
Terrible, terrible design, I think. That, that's a federal update.
I know, but they're-
Terrible design, though.
Stupid design.
You see people tripping on them all day long, every day.
So I think those ones that have that ninety-degree-
What they're, what they're intended to do, though, is to channel a blind person using, you know-
Well, I understand the reasoning why they're there, but they need to have some sort of definition that they're there with that drop-off, because he was just walking that fast, he was on his face. So I talked about painting that after the Fourth, if there's an opportunity to do that. And also, with school being out, I've had close encounters with kids on bikes and things on sidewalks. So maybe re-signage on sidewalks about no-bike skateboards, things that, been noticing kids up there yet, so.
Where do you live?
Maybe something to get, because there used to be signage up there, no bikes, skateboards.
Oh, downtown?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still around there somewhere.
Well, there's-
I always get nervous when I ride my bike up there.
Well, I know. I come out of Chamber, and yeah, I had a close encounter. They just kind of, rah, 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 off they go. But something to at least grapple with them about, so.
Sure.
Okay?
Rick?
That's my great.
I'm going to try to take an hour, so you don't make your mistake.
I don't worry.
Stay kind.
Lager Rodeo's success, and on behalf of the board, there's a lot of thank yous, I guess, to start off with the event. If you'll give kudos to the Fire Department Association. Thank you for the wonderful show. It's, it's great every year. And, you know, I'm interested in trying to brainstorm other ways to, to fund it and, and bring, bring more contestants in, because I think it's pretty cool and impressive to see. Thank you to the police for their good work on the parade route, their good work during the Fourth. And then Nathan was here, and I would have thanked him, but, you know, he's on the board also, and he works pretty hard for the city, balancing all the demands that Lager Rodeo has on him. And then, you know, our city crew for cleanup. It's pretty awesome what we do. So-
You should pass that on to him. He kind of needed a boost after that.
And then Mark, though I do agree with a lot of the sentiment that we heard tonight, I want to thank you for your, your, you know, your calm and cool and professionalism, because, you know, those are some angry folks out there, and you do a great job. Thank you.
Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Still moved.
Okay.
All those in favor, stand. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Eight o'clock, and we're out of here, huh?
Yeah.
Stick around.
Didn't we have, like, a twenty-minute meeting?
I don't know.
Yeah, and since I've been on, I think I've run around ten to twelve minutes.
That was a holiday. I didn't go before.
Seven minutes, seven minutes. It'll never be beat. It was snowing. We had, we didn't have any staff. Klinger was in one here. It was snowing. Tony was on maybe that. I think I gave you a ride home.
Council meeting, we had it. It's been a little short. It was snowing one night. We had, we just paid bills, got out, and I had clean, so I let everybody go home. It was the snow so much.
I don't want them, anyone cutting themselves on that. That's nasty.
Blind.
Second thoughts?
Yeah.
And I didn't think about how, how that would be.
Well, I don't know if the, now, the-
They can't show that.
It's a big thing.
They outnumber us some.
Like, I have that song, remember that song?
Yeah.
And in their defense, what happens, people just flat ignore the signs.
That's why I called, I called E-Rabs.
E-Rabs.
My daughter, Jade, everyone, I called, oh, it was E-Rabs.
Yeah, in the city, it's a different matter, though, because I've been running into this like winters. With the speed ladder for a speedwagon, people are likely in high-speed. It seems like it's because the road is, you know, what it is.
I don't know.
People are nervous because of their children. I get that. Most of the time, we find that they're mostly educated within a few miles.
Well, no, no, that'll change. I grew, I grew in California. And so my, I go down there, and I get lectured all the time, and I, they're all little. So they go, when I went to college, Mexicans were called Chagars. Then they became Latinos. Then they became Spanish. Then they became Latino again. And now they're, now you can call Mexicans because Mexicans are proud. So I'm, yeah, so every time I go down back there, I turn around. I used to wrong.
Oh, yeah, you don't know what to say anymore.
Yeah, and I go, well, God, when is, when is-